Secretary, please call the role.
Mrs. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Sasek?
He- yes.
Ms. Yulinski, yes. Chairman DeHunt?
Yes. Moving on to new business, Mr. Rebeal. Is he over there? Well, I thought you would introduce. Or we can let John introduce.
Do you notice the Buckeyes, how they have their own?
The best opportunity, ladies and gentlemen, this evening, we're going to give it to Aaron, and he knows his team better than us and how they've been doing it. But Aaron, let me introduce you to our planning commission, and our city attorney is with us this evening. We have one public tenant with us, a guest this evening. And on our table, we have our planner. Next to him is Carlton. He is involved as our deputy BO. And then, as you know, Ian, in economic development. And then, I'm here hiding in the corner, is our friend Kim. And she'll tell us what to do in the back of our ear. So Ian, Aaron, if you'll go ahead and introduce everybody else and what role they're playing with you.
Yeah, sure. Aaron Finley. I am leading the consultant team who's doing the economic development and place-making strategy and master plan. And I am joined here today by my colleagues, Aaron Brown, who's been assisting and doing a lot of data and really just everything on the project. And I'm also joined by Mr. Brett Wyler, who is the Economic Development Vice President of Economic Development and something else at TPMA, who's also serving as a strategic advisor on our project here. And I know this is Brett's first time presenting the group today, and he's excited to be here. And that's the team we've got on the screen here today.
Thank you. I'll let you start the charge.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, Planning Commission. Good to see you all again. It's been just a little bit since we were there in person. And it's always a pleasure to present to you on these Thursday nights. So we did want to come today and give, do a couple of things, accomplish a couple of things while we're here. One of them is we wanted to give an update on kind of a summary of our findings from the stakeholder workshops that, you know, we delivered in person when we were there, just, I guess, a month or so ago now. And then, again, we're excited to have Brett join us, who's going to give kind of an overview about small business ecosystems. Really largely going to be kind of informative. I'll let Brett introduce it here, you know, in just a minute. And then, if there's time, we do still have a couple of transportation goals from the master plan. If you'll recall, we were kind of revisiting those goals in other planning documents, kind of one by one. We do have the transportation goals section remaining, although I'm not sure we'll have the time here to get to it today, so we can always push it back if need be. Any questions about the agenda or anything else anybody would like to add? Okay. I'll take silence as a note, and with that, I'll hand it over to Aaron Brown.
And so, before we jumped in here tonight, I do want to give Brett an introduction, a chance to introduce himself. Brett is the Vice President of Economic Development and Strategic Planning at TPMA, as Aaron said. So Brett?
Yeah, thanks, Aaron and Aaron. Brett Wyler, as mentioned, Vice President of Economic Development, TPMA. I'm leading the charge on the economic development and place-making component of this project. I come to you from Erie, Pennsylvania, so not too far away, and have spent nearly 20 years as an economic development practitioner in my community, working in areas of business retention and expansion, small business ecosystem development, business attraction, workforce development, capital finance strategy, and whatever was asked of me by my community. I've since been at TPMA for going on five years now, leading our economic development practice area. And I typically serve as a strategic advisor or a project lead on economic development strategic planning efforts. And I've worked all over the country, including multiple projects in the state of Michigan. Currently engaged in a project with MEDC, Michigan Economic Development Corporation. And I'm also doing an economic development strategic plan in Huron County, Michigan, directly north of you all. So I'm going to talk a little bit about small business ecosystems with you all later. And I'm really excited to be here and appreciate the opportunity. So, thank you, Aaron.
Thanks, Brett. And so, we'll jump right into the stakeholder workshops. So I know a number of you were in attendance there. And so, what we'll go over tonight is just a summary of what we heard from folks at those workshops. Just one thing to note is that this is just one element of the stakeholder engagement process. So that includes, you know, surveys, open houses, and interviews. And then, as we kind of continue to move through the project process, we'll also then join this kind of with the quantitative data to get kind of a more holistic picture. And so, one of those things, the survey, is right in the field right now, the community survey. It's open through November 14th. So if you haven't had a chance to take that yet, we'd love it if you take a few moments to complete that. So with these workshops, the way we have handled the data from these workshops is that, you know, we had our attendees write down a whole bunch of things on sticky notes, on pieces of paper, on index cards. So we collected all of that information. What we then did is we coded those responses to identify kind of key themes. And so that's what we'll look at tonight. So the first session that we had was the economic development session. This was a two-hour session, and this was a larger group. This was, more than 25 folks were with us that day. And then, this followed kind of our typical focus group structure, which is this alone and together. And so we had folks work individually to brainstorm and then kind of prioritize as a group, or at their tables. And the activities that we went through were visioning, strengths, opportunities, challenges, how might we, and moving forward. And kind of those last two, if you have some questions on, we'll kind of talk about a bit more as we go through this. The information from this will inform both the economic development strategy as well as the master plan. So the first activity that we had folks do was a visioning activity. And so we posed the question, if the strategic plan is successful, what does the economy of East Point look like in 10 years? Some things we've asked folks to think about are unique strengths or resources to build upon. What will make East Point a great place to live and work, and how will the economy benefit everyone? And so, what you see in this word cloud is kind of some most common themes that we heard. Not surprisingly, economic growth was a big one, you know, a thriving and vibrant business community, a flourishing school district, a walkable community, and having more jobs locally. So having more East Points, East Point residents live and work in the city. And then, kind of similarly, a desire to bring in young professionals and families. And so, based off of what we heard, this is just a draft vision statement. Again, this is just one component of the stakeholder engagement process. And so, this is not something that will necessarily appear in the final report or anything like that, but just to reflect a bit of what we heard, we wanted to put together something. And so what we came up with, just based off of what we heard at that workshop, is in 10 years, East Point will be a vibrant, walkable community where strong schools, diverse housing, and thriving local businesses drive economic growth. By cultivating a connected and welcoming environment, we will attract and retain families, young professionals, and entrepreneurs, expanding job growth, and enhancing quality of life for all. So, the next activity we worked on was strengths. So first, we asked participants to identify strengths individually, and then, as a group, kind of prioritize them or identify top strengths. So what this first slide here is looking at the ones that were identified individually. And so, things that are in darker color or larger text are more common themes, while lighter colors and smaller text indicate less common themes. This will be something, again, that you'll kind of see repeated throughout this PowerPoint. And so, the top strength identified was local government and city staff. And so, just knowing that this was a curated list of participants, we do want to note that, like, we do these types of sessions all over, and this isn't something we always hear. We do these sessions with kind of similar groups of attendees, and again, not something we always hear. So did want to include that. The location, both being in Metro Detroit and the gateway to Macomb County, you know, right at that intersection of Wayne and Macomb County, county where we're connecting residents and workers and businesses to opportunities across the region. The business ecosystem was something we heard a lot about. So, you know, the chamber, the business resources, the small businesses, the anchor institutions. That was something that came up kind of again and again. Amenities, including access to essentials such as food and transportation, as well as things like parks and the library were frequently mentioned as strengths that enhance the city. And then, community members was rounding out those top five most common themes. So people mentioned that, you know, the residents, they love the city, and that's, you know, energy that can be harnessed to help move East Point forward. Other notable things that were common but not kind of in that top five were the transportation network and traffic volume, city programs, public safety, strength of the local economy, and infrastructure. And so then, this is, we had folks work in their tables to kind of prioritize those and raise the top strengths or the priority strengths. And so not surprisingly, kind of a lot of the same repeat things. Local government and city staff, the business ecosystem, location, public safety, and transportation network were those top five. So then, we had participants identify opportunities. And so, for the sake of time, we didn't have them do that second step, that prioritizing. And so, we provided participants with the definition that an opportunity, something external to the city that can be leveraged as a catalyst for growth. Funding was the most common theme here, and that included both kind of exploring opportunities to bring funding into the city, such as federal grants or that Michigan Neighborhoods Fund, as well as expending funds, you know, things like infrastructure, homeownership incentives, or incentives for small businesses. The transportation network, business ecosystem, commercial corridors, and location in the Metro Detroit area were also kind of among those opportunities. And I think they're all kind of related, thinking about, you know, traffic council businesses, regional connection, close to major employers, growth of commercial corridors, business resources. So then, when we look at these challenges, we did kind of that same structure as we did in looking at the strengths, the working individually, and then working as a group. The top themes there were the school system, blight, community engagement, funding, household income, infrastructure, and land availability. And I thought it was interesting here that community engagement was noted as a challenge, and the residents of, you know, East Point were noted as a strength. And so I think that highlights the importance of the community engagement, right? If our residents are such a strength, we definitely want them to be involved in these processes. And then, again, looking at these priority challenges, kind of the same thing, school system, household income, community engagement, blight, infrastructure, land availability. One thing that we did see rise to the top here, that wasn't necessarily kind of in those top groups of common themes in the previous slide, was technology, specifically talking about, you know, broadband access, computers, things like that. So then, the next activity we had folks work on was asking them to come up with how might we questions. And so, this was based off of those challenges. And so it's kind of a way to start developing goals, right? So if one of your top challenge was the, was labor force participation, an example could be how might we better support worker, better support, you know, residents to increase the labor force participation rate? And these fell into a few main areas. Workforce, housing, local government and city staff development, and then kind of a fifth miscellaneous, which included the increasing computer and internet access as well as attracting young families to the city. And then, the final activity we did was moving forward. And so that's based off of these how might we questions. So we had participants brainstorm strategies to answer that question. Through this activity, there were nearly 100 different strategies generated. We're not going to go through them tonight because it would be so many. But as we continue to, as we shape the strategies for the economic development plan and the master plan, we'll definitely be looking at kind of all of these. So that is a kind of a quick overview of what we heard in that first session. Any questions based off of that? Again, taking silence as none. Then, the second day, what we worked on was the Housing and Land Use Stakeholder Workshop. Again, this was a two-hour session. This was a smaller group. And so there was a bit more of an informal structure here. Definitely more reporting out conversational versus in the first one, you know, we had folks working their groups, definitely a lot more kind of structured and focused. And for this, the activities we covered were visioning, strengths, and then the how might we? And then, this will be primarily in the master plan, although definitely will still inform the economic development strategy. As we all know, you know, economic development and housing are intrinsically linked. So this will also be at play there. So starting again with that visioning activity, the first, the question we asked folks was, if the housing and land use component to the master plan is successful, what does the city of East Point look like in 10 years? Some things for folks to think about are which populations do you hope to streamline housing for? What types of housing do we want to see? Where do we want to see housing, and what other land use changes do we want to see in East Point? What we heard, as you can see in this word cloud, is about, you know, the tenure ratio, so interest in increasing the percentage of residents who are homeowners. A lot about mixed use and live-work-play communities, so that mix of residential and commercial developments. The diversity of housing types to provide options for residents kind of across both, you know, across all the different spectrums, including some support for innovative home types, affordability. And then, similar to what we heard in the economic development workshop, we also heard about options for young professionals and families. And so again, draft, we drafted a vision statement just based off of what we heard. Again, this will change as we continue to collect more information. But what we came up with based off of what we heard just at that session was, East Point offers a thriving mix of high-quality homes in walkable mixed-use neighborhoods, a diverse range of housing types to support affordability and homeownership, attracting young professionals and families who choose to live, work, and invest in the community. East Point's housing reflects a balanced, inclusive city where residents at every life stage can find a place to call home. And so then, we had had folks identify the strengths of the East Point, for East Point right now. Housing character was a top strength. We heard a lot about East Point's brick, single-family homes. And so while this wasn't directly mentioned, I think, you know, you can also draw a connection there to housing quality. The next thing we heard about a lot was zoning, including lot coverage, lot dimensions. You know, there are areas that allow greater density in the updated zoning ordinance, which was, you know, just completed a couple of years ago, or in the last couple of years. Housing mix, you know, diversity of housing type. And then also, you know, there's a spectrum from affordable housing to high-end housing, also starter homes. The location with the proximity to the commercial corridors, the gateway to Macomb County and the Metro Detroit, and then affordability, which makes homeownership attainable to a wider group of people. And so then, we had participants work on identifying strategies to address five how might we questions. And so these were address an aging housing stock, attract new residents, decrease housing vacancies, increase homeownership, and improve housing affordability. And so, with address an aging housing stock, what we heard was a home purchase or rehab education series for both residents and agents. Develop rehab and repair programming with local funding or low-interest loans. Offer tax incentives for renovations and repair. The city purchase and restoration of blighted and dilapidated buildings and a vocational internship program. As far as attracting new residents, we, you know, there was talk about incentives, about focusing on safety and the sense of community, using targeted uses of vacant properties. Some specifics mentioned were for teachers or for people experiencing homelessness. Then a focus on attracting new businesses, offer more diverse housing types, and then also on homebuyer and down payment assistance programs. And when it comes to decrease housing vacancies within the city, county land bank came up, as well as financial education and increased code enforcement. Homeownership rates, a lot of somewhat similar things to the aging housing stock, which is, you know, homeownership, financially, education, down payment assistance programs. Then some about landlords with adopting rent-to-own models, and then incentivizing homeowners to rehab, to rehab older homes. And then, for housing affordability, what we heard was, you know, about speculators, leveraging of a corporate fund or developing a revolving loan fund for affordable housing. And so, right now, what we currently have ongoing as far as stakeholder engagement is that community survey. The posters from the open house are being circulated between City Hall and the school, and the schools, and then we also will be scheduling interviews. So again, this is just one kind of aspect of the whole stakeholder engagement process. And so I guess I'll pause here for questions.
I have a question. The boards are at the schools. Why? A lot of the kids don't live in the community. And we recognize that the school system has been the, one of the bigger opportunities. So why are we, why are we putting them in the schools for input? Why wouldn't we be putting these in churches, other facilities, libraries, senior centers, things like that? Chair? Please.
Good evening. Good to be with you all again. It's been a while. Great question. So just to be clear, I can't tell you exactly how many hours I spent taking all of those boards and putting them up in City Hall. It was, it was a long endeavor. So once I got them up, originally, the plan was to rotate a few boards between here and the library every week. And that would have taken a significant, even more staff time. There are a couple of reasons we decided to rotate them into the schools. And to be clear, the boards, as you can see, are not in the schools yet. They will be in the schools just for the final week of the survey process. Or the, or at least as it stands now. Of course, the survey could be open longer, but next week is supposed to be our final week. So we did offer it to the schools for a variety of reasons. Number one, to get input from staff, parents, and students, especially those that, you know, can't interact. And we have even offered to actually, not a lot of time, but spend some time, if the schools are interested, going in and kind of helping them navigate and explain the sort of feedback that we're looking for and helping them actually contribute to what the future of the community could look like. Also, one thing that we learned during our last meeting with the consultants is there are some key demographics in our community that we have not so far reached either with the boards or with our survey. And we believe, not only by engaging with the schools, but we also have a meeting set up with our chaplains. So we are crossing our Ts and dotting our Is. So they will be in the schools, but we are, as part of those interviews, trying to reach some of those areas where we have demographic gaps as it reflects to the demographics of the community.
Has there been any thought about getting these at the chamber?
As far as...
In the chamber office, getting input from the Chamber of Commerce?
So the chamber was present at the Economic Development Focus Group, as you know. They, as far as I know, have been promoting the survey for us as well. I don't know that generally many people visit the chamber office on a regular basis. And frankly, there are 19 boards, so you have to have a pretty significant amount of wall space. And they, as you may also know, have their Deck of the Halls fundraiser going on right now as we speak. So their office has been very busy, we'll say, the last couple of weeks. So there really would not, even if we wanted to do it at the chamber office, had been an opportunity now. If they were interested in hosting the boards in the future, that's something we could certainly talk to Lyndon and Sandra about. But no, that has not been something that we've explored as of yet. Thank you. And Chair? I just wanted to share, I know for the economic development piece of the report out from the focus groups, one of the things that came up was internet and broadband access. And I wanted to pull it up on SEMCOG's website because I hadn't looked at it myself. But in East Point, the percentage of households with internet access alone is at 90.9%. And with broadband access, it drops a little bit, but it's still at 88.5%. And so, that does still leave, you know, about 1,200 and 1,500 residents respectively that do not have internet access. Unfortunately, with all of the broadband money that was out there, we did explore and look into to see if the community would be eligible. But because our internet and broadband access rates are so high, we were not eligible for any of that. So certainly something that we could address, but also I would say something that, in the grand scheme of things, we're doing pretty good on overall.
I think it's safe to say, and I know a few of these residents that have absolutely no interest in being connected to the internet whatsoever. So I think we're doing just fine.
And our library, to their credit too, you know, they have their computers. The Clinton Macomb just up the road has great classes. So I think if there are any access issues or things where people need help, there are resources out there in our community and in surrounding communities on that front as well.
I have some questions. For the vocational internship programs, what does that look like? Because I love internship programs. But what does that look like for this? Anyone? Going, going?
Bueller?
I'll, I'll turn it over to the consultants if they want to address that, and then I'll, I'll share a few thoughts from the hats that I wear.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The question is, how do we set up vocational internships?
Yes.
Well, what do they entail? What is involved, and what does the internship program look like?
Well, I think there's a, I guess it depends on the way. There's a lot of different ways you can set up internship programs. I mean, there are more formal apprenticeship programs that you can set up kind of through the states and with access to part of even federal registration for apprenticeship programs. When it comes to other vocational internship programs, I really think that a lot of it just kind of, and Brett, you can jump in if I'm wrong here, but a lot of it, I think, has to do with just kind of identifying those partnerships, either connecting local businesses with education providers, in some cases with training providers, and just trying to create those opportunities for partnerships. You know, there are a lot of ways that it benefits, you know, everybody. It benefits people entering the workforce. It benefits the companies who, you know, typically internships maybe pay a little bit less or have a different kind of approach than, you know, hiring a full-time staff or something like that. So, you know, I think for the large part, it's just kind of, you know, giving opportunities for, to connect education and training providers with businesses that are looking for staff.
Okay. And then a second thing that I was trying to get, wanted to get clarification on is there was, in one of the slides, I don't remember which one, provide rental assistance. Now, does that mean the city providing it? Or us assisting, the city assisting renters or maybe first-time homebuyers with assistance? Because if we, the city, give incentives, how does that keep the city profitable? Or how does that get funded? I guess I have a ton of questions in that arena.
Yeah, so a couple of things. The first thing I would say, and Aaron, I'll let you, is while there are a variety of ways to structure either rental assistance or down payment assistance, and a variety of different kind of funding options that may or may not be available, you know, for... you know, for the local jurisdiction or municipality to direct some of those funds to set up programs like that. What what you're seeing on these slides is is just kind of us maybe reporting what we heard in these stakeholder sessions. And so they're not necessarily strategies that we're even bringing to you today to kind of think about, you know, even get kind of responses to whether or not, you know, you would be on board for those kinds of strategies. We'll have lots of time and we'll definitely be having those conversations down the line. Uh, this is largely what we heard about in those rooms and just kind of reporting that to you. Uh, it's quite possible you might see a strategy like rental assistance or down payment assistance or something like that at that comes out of the recommendations. Or, you know, that we might want to float and think about implementation steps at a later date. Um, but you know, really today, I mean, um, you know, I think there were lots of really interesting ideas and and we were uh very encouraging to say there's no wrong ideas or we're not even necessarily at the point where we're thinking about trying to implement some of these ideas. We just really wanted to kind of have a brainstorming activity, think about how people want to, you know, we're thinking about different ways, you know, I I uh and as this always happens in these conversations, there are some ideas that maybe, you know, don't make sense for a given community, whether that's because of access to resources or whether that's, you know, existing capacities or or even in some cases in in work we've done in some states, we hear lots of recommendations that actually are not legal in that state, for example. And so largely, this is just kind of um us collecting information, ideas people are having, uh and we're just kind of sharing that with you.
Does anybody else have any?
I was gonna say.
Does anybody else have any questions? Moving on.
Great. Um, so one of the things that we heard
Hold on.
A lot of, sorry?
Hold that thought.
I wa- I want to just address the question. He's correct. The workshops were just bringing ideas to the table. But the subject of bringing it to the to the master plan is because of the population that the city does possess of rental properties and how do we move them from a rental to an occupancy that is owned? And what design programs are available and what kind of assistance is there? The other thing that goes along with this is the cost, not only in a home a a non-owner occupied property is the own occupied property that has a low mod income, a family living in it. How do we get them to upgrade their property? How do we get them to maintain blight from their property? And that's where this program needs to be addressed in the master plan. And we've proposed it to be considered as we go down the road in this project, in this process, is to break this thing into uh a much smaller um neighborhood evaluation so that we can assess where our first floor uh ranch brick homes are versus where our um nineteen forty-two matchbox homes are and what we have to do to bring both of those types of neighborhoods to an equal place of of quality of life. So pro- that, both of those processes allow us the opportunity to expand our master development of residential development if we can break it into a much tighter, narrower district to determine what's really needed and then what process can we use to get there. So if rentals can go from rentals to ownership based on a design program for being allowed to rent without calling it a lease, but moving it into that, then maybe we can get them into renting with the intent to own and occupy for themselves. But that would be the program that would be, that was brought to the table at this workshop for them to consider. Pardon? Is she already, she's whispering in my ear. And it's basically the rentership that we need to bring into the city. And that's what brings this whole thing together. Yes, workforce. Does that help answer your questions going forward?
Kind of.
Chair? Yes. Resource and a thought um and a comment. Um, resource, so through McComb County's Planning and Economic Development Department, they do have a program called Fueling the Talent Pipeline that is trying to help districts build some of these um well, the pipeline as it speaks. So they're trying to pair up, whether it be a manufacturing facility or a small business owner. Um, so they are actively seeking out grants. Um, they have some one-day programs like Manufacturing Day that brings thousands of students together to see all sorts of different kinds of careers under one roof. I think they do it at like the Suburban Collection Showplace or something like that. Um, and there are, there are other things that they do through that program as well, but that's just kind of a a taste of it. Um, for, from the district perspective, um, one thing I know that can be challenging is a lot of these amazing uh professionals, be they a cosmetologist or a builder or an electrician, um can make significantly more money working in the field than uh what certain, you know, districts might be able to afford to pay those professionals. So it can be challenging uh even when the district figures out, okay, there's this interest for this particular career path to find and then to retain um a qualified instructor to actually keep that program going and grow it over time. Um, and the last thing is, I'm glad we see um advocacy for a county land bank up there. I know it was something that was brought to the County Board of Commissioners two years ago with funding from the state land bank. Unfortunately, they did turn it down at that point. Um, as a city, we are too small to start our own land bank. Um, and we did uh have the opportunity to participate in a real estate forum today at um McComb Community College Center Campus. So that was something that I raised again, which was, again, I was told you have to go to the Board of Commissioners. So I do think that's something positive that we could advocate for, especially with uh recent Supreme Court rulings around tax reverted properties, which um our resident expert, Ms. Holman, knows a lot more about than I do. But um, yeah, definitely a good thing to see up there. Thanks.
Does anybody else have any comments before we turn it back to Aaron? Aaron, you're back up.
So one of the things that came up um a lot that we heard a lot about was, you know, the business ecosystem, small businesses. And so with that, we wanted to bring Brett in to talk about small business ecosystems.
Not to be rude, you have exactly nineteen minutes before we have to be done.
Yeah, uh, I'll try to go quick. So a couple of quick things. Uh, Aaron mentioned earlier, this is uh my my component of the presentation is is designed to be informative, hopefully. Um, two, it's very generalized, right? I'm gonna talk about what experience in our previous work and research has shown um about what constitutes a successful small business ecosystem. This is not East Point specific, okay? We're kind of laying the foundation today um to kind of give you an overview of what a a successful small b- business ecosystem needs to look like. And then through our analysis, we'll start to determine what East Point has, what it doesn't have, what the opportunities are. And then ultimately, those will help us formulate the appropriate strategies to ensure that East Point is well-prepared to support small businesses in the community. So I just wanted to kind of lay that groundwork before I get started. Aaron, if you go to the the next slide, please. First and foremost, I think it's important to define a small business. Um, oftentimes, we speak about small businesses as if they're all the same. Um, and so these first couple of slides, we're gonna try to talk about what really constitutes a small business. On the screen here, you'll see a very technical definition from the SBA. Simply put, the SBA defines a small business as an enterprise with five hundred or less employees. Now, there are some differences across industries, but it really is kind of the general rule of thumb is the SBA, the Small Business Administration, considers anyone with less than five hundred employees a small business, okay? We also know that small businesses have a profoundly positive impact in the communities in which they reside. Um, we know at the national level, roughly half of America's workforce is employed by a small business. Uh, we also know that revenue generated by local small businesses is much more likely to stay in this, in the community. And I've included what I think is a particularly um apt definition of kind of what they are and and how they support a community. Says here, they create new jobs, they generate taxes, they buy and supply local products and services. They create property owners and renters and they provide economic stability. I think more than that, they're cultural enhancers. Um, they bring a vibrancy and a vitality to a community. They bring character to a community. Next slide. I mentioned that they're not all the same. Um, and we've tried to kind of categorize them um in a very simple framework, as you see here on the screen. First, we have what we call microenterprises or very small businesses. These typically employ less than five people. Um, they have very low capital requirements to start. They typically generate less than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue and can often be seen as side gigs, lifestyle businesses. Um, they are the professional services firm, the attorney or the accountant who has hung their own shingle and started their own firm. We also have Main Street businesses. And Main Street businesses, they sell their product or service in market. So they're not typically exporting out to other markets. Um, these are typically your cultural and amenity enhancers. The local restaurant, the coffee shop, the bookstore, the record store, the bike repair shop. Um, and they're really kind of focused on that long-term sustainability in the community. We also have scalable businesses. These are what, you know, typically are referred to as kind of your tech businesses, your tech startups. Uh, they typically have some type of proprietary technology or service that they offer. Um, they're focused on emerging or new markets. Um, they're really focused on that hypergrowth and and typically or generally um, they're focused on selling their company to a larger corporation. And then we have those mature businesses that have um achieved some level of sustainable success. They're over five years old. Um, they employ between five hundred and two hundred and fifty employees. They've validated their product or service in the market. Uh, they typically have steady revenue and they're focused on growth and in in expansion uh into the current markets in which they operate. Now, we understand that East Point, the 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 mostly have the microenterprises, the Main Street businesses and the mature businesses, less of the scalable businesses today. Also want to talk about this concept of the ecosystem. And once again, I provided a very simplified visual to understand the small business ecosystem. And again, you see a definition here on the screen, set of conditions and supports that all entrepreneurs need to thrive, to launch a business, expand their business, uh retain their business. You see four key component parts here of the ecosystem that all successful ecosystems need to possess. Um, they need people and talent, and we'll go into it in a little bit more detail what that means. Uh, they need customers and markets. They need to te- uh sell their product or service to customers. They need access to capital. And then they need that support service, that network of support services to assist them. Uh, the, this is all tied together by a strong culture of coordination, collaboration, champions, supporters, strong policy. Um, I'd be remiss to note that there's probably one element that I should have included that you don't see here. Uh, especially given kind of the the overall scope of our work and you being the planning commission, but physical space is another element that is required to have a successful ecosystem, right? Spaces for businesses to operate, to expand and to grow into. Those storefronts on your Main Street are also a critical component of an ecosystem. You can skip this slide. This is just another, I guess, visual representation of the ecosystem. We're 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 stretched for time here a little bit. So people and talent are are absolutely the most important component of a successful small business eco- ecosystem. They're the doomers, the risk takers, the innovators, the culture builders. We can think about people and talent in a couple of different way, uh, a couple of different ways. We need the entrepreneurs themselves, right? We need those risk takers, those innovators. Um, they need employees, so they need people that have the skills, the expertise, the education and the training to employ. Um, and then we also need a network of mentors and champions to support those entrepreneurs. Uh, successful entrepreneurs that can share advice and wisdom with new entrepreneurs. Um, and then we also need that peer-to-peer networking um so that entrepreneurs can share resources, ideas, uh serve as sounding boards for each other. Typically, you're gonna see these universe of people and talent in universities, school districts, local workforce boards. These are all key partners required to cultivate that strong network of people and talent within an ecosystem. Next is capital. The reality is, is businesses need capital to operate. Um, access to capital across the business lifecycle, cycle continuum um is essential for entrepreneurs and local small business owners to launch, expand and scale their operations. Small businesses at different stages of the lifecycle require different types of capital. The capital that they need fuels their investment in the physical space, technology needs, equipment and that talent we referenced earlier. Um, we also know that increased lending and investment in small businesses, as I mentioned earlier, is more likely to circulate money across the community. And then easy access to capital enables firms to access working capital to manage any market disruptions, supply chain disruptions or any economic downturns. So again, you see here a list of partners, very generalized, but your traditional commercial banks or credit unions, uh, community development finance institutions, uh often referred to as CDFIs. Those are mission-based lenders. Um, it's also important to have an equity-based investment network, whether that's angel investors willing to invest seed capital in an innovative startup or small business or venture capital for those scalable business. We also have public financing tools which typically serve as gap financing tools for small businesses that aren't often able to raise the uh capital required or have the equity required that commercial banks require of them. So we bring in public financing tools to fill those gaps. Um, but again, I think the point here is there's a a multitude of capital sources required for businesses across that business lifecycle continuum.
You have nine minutes.
Yeah, I know. I I feel like I'm rushing. I know I'm rushing. Um, I'm watching the clock almost as much as I'm watching my slide here. Um, business support services. So this is a big, broad category. But these are those training providers, technical assistance providers, mentorship networks that help entrepreneurs with business management, marketing, financial skills. Uh, we also know that they can support um business planning, strategic planning, marketing assistance. These are oftentimes both public sector partners, like a small business development center or a manufacturing extension partnership. But this is also a trusted network of private enterprise, accountants, attorneys, um, your insurance providers, right? A strong network of professional services to support small businesses in the variety of needs that they may have to start, sustain and grow their enterprise. Next slide. We mentioned uh market businesses need to sell their products and services to customers. They can sell to local residents or consumers. They can sell to large institutions or oftentimes what we refer to as anchor institutions. They can sell to the government. They can sell to large corp- corporate institutions. They can sell to um hospital systems, school district systems. But there needs to be access to these large buyers for small businesses to succeed. We also need to consider the fact that they may want to or may have a product or service um that they can export into international markets. And so providing them the assistance or the wherewithal And so providing them the assistance or the wherewithal to enter new international markets is also essential. Also plugging them into existing supply chains. All right, sorry, Erin, you're rushing me here. Key partners, state and local government, international businesses offices, the state has one, various trade associations, chambers of commerce play this role in a very organic way, connecting business to business opportunities for small businesses. And I mentioned those anchor institutions, those large employers, hospitals, government, et cetera. And for all of this to happen, you have to have a strong culture of coordination and collaboration across key stakeholders, including you all, the planning commission and the folks in the room that work for the city. You need to generate trust with your small business owners, right? The old saying of, I'm the government, I'm here to help you, used to be kind of a punchline, but really the city of East Point really needs to prioritize fostering that trust in those relationships with the small businesses in their community. They need to design programs and policy and legislation that support small businesses. And then there really has to be a collective effort across a variety of stakeholders to embrace a shared vision, shared goals, to create that collective impact for the small business community at large. And again, here you'll see some key partners, city and county government, economic development organizations or EDOs, workforce development boards, the private sector, your largest employers should be at the table when discussing strategies to support small businesses. Philanthropy is increasingly playing a role in supporting small businesses. And then the small businesses themselves, they need to be at the center of this. Building that trust and building those relationships will enable you to understand their needs in a really dynamic environment. So, I really rushed through that, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about the presentation.
Anybody have any questions? So, will you be presenting your findings to city council since none of them were at any of the meetings? Was that a dig?
Totally.
Will you be presenting your findings to city council?
The findings that we just presented today?
Correct.
We don't have anything scheduled. I mean, you know, we're not necessarily on their schedule at this moment, but we're happy to present these findings. As Erin mentioned, these are really kind of early findings, although obviously what Brett presented is a little bit different. But as far as the stakeholder engagement findings, there's going to be much more of that to come. I think this is just kind of our first look at some of those things. As Erin mentioned, we have surveys in the field. We have those boards from the open houses to process. And so we'd be happy to present to city council really at any time. We were happy to see some city council members at the open houses, including, including the mayor, but we, you know, would be happy to do it anytime. Just, you know, I guess if I got to choose, I would maybe wait until we have a little bit more, you know, to present, but we're happy to do it.
Okay. And then the other request that I have is when we do this virtual thing again, can we confer with our esteemed colleagues here on dates before we just randomly pluck a date out of the air? Because it's important for all of the commissioners to be here. Granted, some were sick today and some, that's things you can't get around, but it would be nice if we had targets that we could actually put a little input into. So, we have a full board. It's important that every.
We started a little earlier.
And started a little earlier. That way I don't have to play timekeeper. Please.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. We're very open to work with you on selecting dates that work better for.
Thank you.
I have something. So, I agree. I think it's premature to forward anything to, or have them have a meeting with city council. I guess city administration, if they wanted to, could forward the findings for now, but I don't see a reason for them to have to have a formal meeting and spend more money. And as far as starting meetings earlier, some of us don't have flexible schedules to get here earlier because we have day jobs.
You've heard the request. Let's schedule meetings out about the same time, but we just, maybe we have to do them a little bit more faster. And more in advance.
Or have a special meeting on a different Thursday night.
Okay. All right. Do you have anything else for us so I can move us in? Thank you very much for everything. Sorry about the sped up version.
No problem. Good to see you all.
Thank you. Take care. All right, moving on to the hearing of the public. As this was a special meeting, there is only one hearing of the public. You have exactly three minutes to speak. If you wish to be heard, please write your name on the piece of paper that may or may not be on that podium. Does anybody wish to be heard? Anybody wish to be heard? Seeing none, we will close the hearing of the public and we will move on to commissioners' comments. I'm going to exclude administration. I apologize since we are short of time. Ms. Julinski?
I have nothing.
Ms. Moody?
I have nothing.
Mr. Sasek?
I have nothing.
Chairman DeHunt has nothing. Moving on, can I get a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
We have motion by Mr. Sasek. We have support by Ms. Moody. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Sasek?
Yes.
Mrs. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Chairman DeHunt?
Yes. All right. We will take a five-minute break and then reconvene.